Three Los Angeles City Council members, one who has since resigned, former president of L.A. City Council, Nuri Martinez, Gil Sadio, and Kevin DeLeon. Those two men have kind of dug their heels in and haven't resigned as of yet, despite pleas from the president, the Congressional Latino Caucus, and just about every high-ranking Democratic official there is. They are still showing up to work. Also on that tape, we heard former labor leader Ron Herrera engaged in that conversation, not just disparaging other members of the Los Angeles political class, but engaging in a scheme, a scheme to eviscerate black political power across Los Angeles. The fallout of what we're calling the October surprise just keep coming. There is now an investigation that's been launched by our Attorney General. There's also been a complaint made to the U.S. Department of Justice. There's also calls for the redistricting process that was done under Nuri Martinez to be scrapped and to be redone. There are also calls for that process to be taken away from the city council and to be given to a completely autonomous and independent body. Today, we're going all in on the fallout from the Los Angeles City Council racial divide. All coming up next.
Live from Los Angeles. This is the special report with Ariva Martin.
My first guest is Erica Smith. She is a columnist for the Los Angeles Times. She's been following the fallout of the racist rant that we heard on audio tape involving three disgraced council members, one now former council member and one former labor leader. And Erica wrote a column yesterday called, "I'm a Black Woman Not Upon: The Forgotten Victim of L.A.'s Racist Tape Scandal," where she writes about Heather Hutt, who was appointed to serve temporarily as the 10th District Councilwoman, given Mark Ridley Thomas's suspension. Good morning, Erica, and thank you for joining me.
Morning. Thanks for having me on.
So Erica, I read your column early in the morning yesterday, about 6 o'clock in the morning, and then I started getting all of these messages from a friend of mine who is like the most in-tune person on Twitter that I know. So she reads every tweet about everything. And of course, she had read your column as well. And she started sending me these tweets. And some of them were people pushing back on your article, saying that the article was one-sided, saying that it did not take into consideration what other members of the 10th Council District thought about Heather Hutt's appointment. And as you know, there's been a lot of calls for Heather to step down. People were saying her appointment was illegitimate because of that conversation we heard, you know, between Nuri Martinez, Gil Sadio, Kevin DeLeon, and Ron Herrera. Tell us what, you know, who did you talk to when you wrote the article? Obviously, you talked to Heather because she's quoted extensively in the article, but other members of the 10th. Who else did you talk to about the article?
Well, I mean, I talked to several people. I mean, as a columnist, I don't quote everybody that I interview. I'm not really going to reveal all of my sources just because I generally, as a columnist, I kind of tend to just talk to people. You know, some people I get permission to quote, some people I do not. But, you know, my goal was to get a sense of what, you know, people were saying. And yes, I'm well aware of the fact that not everybody likes the fact that Heather Hutt is in that seat. I've actually written that along those lines before. As I've told some people who disagreed with my column, I'm sure this is not going to be the last thing I write about Heather Hutt. I mean, this is, I mean, if you learned anything for the past week, this is going to be not just the issue in the 10th, but the issue involving the L.A. City Council, involving redistricting, involving public trust in city government is an ongoing issue that is, best I can tell, is not going to end anytime in the near future. You know, but I think my goal in writing this was to talk about her. I mean, personally, you know, I am, I guess, definitely, compared to people who've lived here forever, rather new to L.A., I didn't know much about Heather Hutt. A lot of people that I spoke to also didn't know a lot, but some people that I spoke to also did not know a lot about Heather Hutt. I mean, they knew she existed, they knew the basics, but they didn't really know a ton about her. And so, you know, as a columnist for the Times, I look at our audience as a broader audience and trying to also introduce her because of the way she came into office and understanding that she's going to face, I would imagine, a wall of opposition to an extent as this goes forward.
Yeah, so I'm glad you mentioned that in terms of, you know, kind of being new to L.A. city and L.A. politics. And it's complicated. I was just at a luncheon last week with a new media executive that moved into L.A. and someone asked him the question about this anti-blackness sentiment that's pervasive in a lot of our institutions. And he was kind of shocked and surprised by that question. And that was on Friday before the leaked tapes came out and your colleagues at the time broke that story on Sunday. So you can imagine what our text messages back and forth looked like because that question had been asked literally two days before. I do know Heather very well. I was instrumental. I helped her get the job that she had with our now Vice President, our then Senator Kamala Harris as her district director. I worked with her closely when she was in the State Assembly, working along with several members of our state legislature. And she has always had a really strong reputation. I think she's very well-liked by members of the L.A. alcohol, you know, kind of the inner circle of particularly black political folk in L.A. I think Heather has a really positive and strong reputation. So I don't think any of the comments that I've read online or the people that are calling for her to step down have anything to do with her personally. I think she's really liked personally. I think people think she's strong. I think it has to do with what people are now coming to understand was a year-long plan by Nuri Martinez and others to orchestrate who would sit in the 10th and to take advantage, quite frankly, of Mark Ridley Thomas's suspension and to use that suspension as a way, right before the final vote on redistricting, to have a say in black political power. So in some ways, I see Heather as being, unfortunately, perhaps collateral damage. And it remains to be seen how members of the 10th. I don't happen to live in the 10th, but, you know, I'm going to be talking later in the show with some individuals that do live and actually conduct business in the 10th. So did you hear, and I know you're not going to reveal your sources, I wouldn't ask you to as an esteemed journalist, but you must have talked to folks who said, hey, it's not about Heather. It's about that year-long process that Nuri Martinez and others were involved in to have the say over who represents us rather than giving that say to the people that live and vote in the 10th.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that was, you know, all of the things you said, you know, are accurate. And I absolutely think that most of the people that I talked to said it was the process, not the person. I think if there was one quote or some version of that quote that I heard again and again, that was it, you know? And I understand it. I had nobody, you know, that I spoke to spoke negatively of Heather. But it was all about the process. And I think part of the reason why I wrote that column is I think, you know, obviously, people like you, some of the folks that are involved in a lot of this, know this backstory. But you have, remember, a lot of people in L.A. have no idea any of this. And so, you know, part of my job as a journalist, particularly going to a broader mainstream audience, is to kind of educate people. And I think it's very relevant to the conversation we are now having as a city about redistricting and about why the process is flawed. And, you know, we have, you know, City Attorney Mike Fuhrer, which I know you were just discussing in your last segment. But, you know, he is pushing for an independent commission to basically redo the maps, throw out all the maps that were, that were drawn in 2021 at the time that this recording from the three council members and labor leader were made, and, you know, have somebody redraw it. And I think that how Heather Hutt, the appointment process, and all of the things that are now very apparent about the maneuvering behind the scenes and showing that leads to credibility about why we need to do that. I am a, you know, big supporter of having an independent commission do redistricting, taking a look at it, obviously, our Attorney General, as well as investigating that process. But I think all of these things are relevant. And I don't think that a lot of readers really understand sometimes political intricacies. You know, they hear that tape, they read the clips, they hear the snippets, but they don't put the, you know, put the pieces together. And I see myself as a journalist, and I think a lot of us at the L.A. Times see ourselves as journalists that could try to put the pieces together for the broader city in a way that they can understand what's actually happening.
Yeah, and you're right. I mean, the 10th is only one of 15 districts in our large metropolis of 3, 4 million people. And if you don't live in the 10th, if you don't do business in the 10th, you may have no idea even who Mark Ridley Thomas is. I mean, it's kind of hard since he was on the County Board of Supervisors, but you may not know what has happened to him and how important that district, the 10th District, is to black political power in the city. I think one of the things that struck me about the article, Erica, was I being what I consider myself to be an insider in L.A. black politics in particular, in politics more broadly, is I was fully aware that there were so many people in the 10th who were locked out of that decision-making process as Nuri Martinez was telling the city that she was talking to black residents in the 10th and that overwhelmingly, the choice was Heather. And I knew, and many other folks knew, that that was a complete lie. Nuri Martinez was not talking to the entirety of District 10. She had selected a group of African-Americans in that district that were in agreement with her decision to appoint Herb Weson, someone who I've also worked very close with and have a lot of respect for. But she had decided that that was the group. And then she said to the public, "I have the support of District 10." And I know that there were black ministers in that district who were trying to get an audience, who felt like they were left out of the process. I know black women in that district who were trying to get an audience who were locked out of that process. But yet, but for those tapes, the world and the city of Los Angeles in particular were told, "This is a completely fair, open, and transparent process." And it was far from open, fair, and transparent. And I guess, I'm wondering, when do we get that story?
Well, I mean, I've kind of written that story. I mean, that was the last story that I think that I wrote on this, was talking about how this fight between, over the CD 10 seat, this is granted before, I think Heather was, if I remember correctly, before Heather was appointed to it, but talked about how there isn't an agreement about how to move forward and how there are, you know, supporters of Mark Ridley Thomas that feel a certain way about certain things. And I understand why. And there are also supporters of Herb Weson and who feel a certain reason why that there isn't a consensus, no matter what former President Nuri Martinez said. So I mean, I think that, you know, for me, I look at the work that I do as not a one-off column. You know, I get that there's a, you know, some criticism about what I wrote, but this is, you know, one of many things that I've written about this, one of many things that the L.A. Times has written about this. And so, I mean, I guess I would say to people who are criticizing this one article, that's fine. I hardly expect everybody to agree with everything that I write. And if you do, I am, I don't know what to say to that because that's just wild to me. But I think that, you know, we got to look at this as a bigger picture, right? And as I said, this is one column about Heather Hutt. And it will not be the last because I think you and I both know that this is not the end of this story. And so there will be more stories to be written. And I think that a lot of this is going to come into play when we talk about how we fix the redistricting process and eliminate a lot of the flaws and the ability for maneuvering that we heard on that audio, you know, in addition to the actual blatant racism.
If you were able to articulate any particular consensus amongst the members of the 10th that you did interview, was there any consensus? Like, "We need a new election. If Mark Ridley Thomas is not going to return to that seat, we should have an election where everyone gets to vote." Or, "We should have, you know, some town hall meetings and let names come forward in addition to Heather's." Or, "We should let Heather, you know, serve out the term until we know what's happening with Mark Ridley Thomas." Was there any consensus?
You know, I think, other than the consensus that, you know, people were upset with the process, not the people, or the person in this case, I think exhaustion was another one with the ups and downs of things that have happened, you know, largely because of, you know, Nuri Martinez. But I think there was also this kind of, you know, love or hate Heather. I think people were happy to have, most people told me they were just happy to have a voting representative back. And then to have this tape drop, which just throws everything back into the, you know, in a way that everybody can hear, knowing that this is not over, I think people were just exhausted. You know, I like to think that people, you know, I don't really know when people are thinking that far ahead. I think people are literally just still, frankly, in the moment. I think, you know, political insiders, obviously, were gaming this out and thinking about what's happening next. But a lot of the average people that I talked to were just frustrated and tired and just wanted somebody to represent them on the council. And I think it's complicated because a lot of people just don't dislike, they like Heather. They don't dislike her, and I think it makes it hard. But I think also people know that they really hate the process that put her there, and they're very much questioning that. And so, I don't know, I don't know if there was really a consensus other than just exhaustion with this entire process. But, and an expectation that it's going to continue, I think that's probably was the most consistent themes that I heard.
Yeah, I want to bring in Pastor Edward Anderson. He goes by Eddie Anderson. He has a church in the 10th, and he actually lives in the 10th District. Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us. You sat on that redistricting commission. You were appointed by our mayor, Eric Garcetti. I know you're the pastor at McCarty Memorial Christian Church. What do you say to what Erica just said? Is that she thinks we should have an independent commission, that the city council members shouldn't have the final say in how these maps are drawn?
I think that is a good idea. As a commissioner, one of 19 commissioners who sat on the city, we sat on the commission for a whole year, and we had strict rules, right? Once you got appointed to the commission, you couldn't talk to a city council person without reporting it out, right? You couldn't have meetings with their staff without reporting it out to the public. We couldn't draw maps in back rooms as the council people did. We had to draw it right there on the screen in public. And so I think when you hear those tapes, what you hear is there is undermining and a process of gerrymandering that was trying to take place in the back room to undo the very map. In fact, as the commissioner who sat on the commission for CD 10, I had some questions because we drew the map in public, you know, got called all kinds of names by people in public. I got called all kinds of Rachel Epithex, and we drew it out. But then, a week before the maps were due, we saw all of the upheaval happen in CD 10. I thought it was interesting because Mark Ridley Thomas, Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, was actually on the city side, the redistricting committee that overlooked the map that would come from the commission. That was taken away. A new little committee was drawn. Then we had a mystery map pop up, right? We rejected it as a commission because he said, "This does not follow our process. Our process is for fair, equity, transparency." We rejected this.
Wait a minute, Pastor Anderson, who drew the mystery map?
The idea was, it was called Map L, so we just assumed it was labor. And we said, "No, we don't know where this map came from. We did not draw this in public. It looked totally different than what we wanted." That was during the same period of time where Councilwoman Martinez was removing some of her advisory members and replacing them. And all this is public because you could see on the videos, who these are people that are on the council, you know, we're appointees. And so we had some questions around what's going on. But then, the frustrating part, and I know all the commissioners really got frustrated that once we submitted the map, we gave them two maps to work from. And we also gave them input that we think an independent commission should be done because of all the kind of maneuvering we saw trying to happen around. The council rejected the map. Council President Nuri Martinez scrapped the map and decided to draw their own in committee. And we thought that was wrong. So there is a map.
You just gave us the best admission as to why this whole process has to be redone. Let me get Professor Jody Armah in this conversation. He's a professor extraordinaire at USC and a political expert. He knows Los Angeles like the back of his hand. He knows Los Angeles politics, black politics in particular. Okay, Professor Armah, Pastor Anderson said, "We gave them the map, and it got scrapped, and a new map was presented." Does that not make the case for why this whole process has to be completely scrapped and we have to start over? I think you're muted, Professor.
There we go. I'm sorry, from the bottom, can you hear me, Ariva? From the bottom to the top, you have a process that is riddled with undemocratic practices. And right, and that's what we're talking about. Democracy, really, making power accountable to those affected by its exercise and the effort by those in power to insulate themselves from accountability, from having to represent, really, and do these back-room deals and all the rest. And in that milieu, real rampant, you know, real just kind of rancid racism we see can run rampant, you know, from the comments of everyone who was standing around. So, so, yeah, Ariva, I'd like to agree with you that this is shining a light on the need for a complete overhaul in, you know, how we approach this.
You know, I was one of many people early on, on Sunday, once we got the tapes, calling for an investigation by our Attorney General, Attorney General Banta, as a lawyer. I'm thinking, you know, when you have a rogue cop that has testified in a bunch of trials, and you now learn that this cop is rogue, you got to go back and look at all of those cases because they've been tainted by the testimony of that rogue cop. And what Pastor Anderson just said, you know, is, again, so analogous to that. We have this rogue process, so we have to be suspect of the final results that came out of it. Did you know, Pastor Anderson, that Mark Ridley Thomas and Nuri Martinez were locked in this kind of fight? That she saw him as probably one of the strongest voices on the council, standing up for, you know, progressive politics and fighting for black political power in Los Angeles?
I did not know the intricacies of their fight, but I did know that when I was appointed to the commission, that from community members, that everyone saw this as a civil rights fight. It was like, you got to protect our right to vote, got to protect the voting rights of the people in CD 10 and, quite frankly, of minorities across this city. We got to protect that right. And so that's what we brought forth in the commission and adopted as our values. And so, I mean, to this question, do we need a new map? I think so. And I think that also there's a map that the commission created that has not even been used, that was created over a year in a process.
Wow. Erica, did you all report on what Pastor Anderson just said? The fact that they created two maps, presented them to the city council, that they had this mystery L map that they suspect was labor and that ultimately, their map was rejected by the city?
I'd have to go back and look to see exactly which stories we did. But I know that our city hall reporter at the time was covering redistricting pretty closely. And I did know we did a number of redistricting stories. And there was a lot of those kinds of shenanigans with the maps, I mean, the back and forth. And I know we had a number of stories on that. It's always really interesting now because, obviously, now the wider public cares about redistricting. But as I recall, at that time, so many of those stories were just not read by the mass public, just seeing that. So it's, it's, it's one of those things where I think the shock of this audio, or even about the shock, but the bluntness and the nastiness of this audio has spiked an interest in the redistricting process that I, you know, just from a civic responsibility, had hoped would have been there when this was actually happening. But, you know, that doesn't always happen. So hopefully, we are in a position where we can educate people, not just about what happened, but about what should happen and what it should look like.
Let me ask you this, Professor Armah. Where are you on CD 10 and the appointment of Heather Hutt? We've all said, and we'll get you to weigh in on this too, Pastor Anderson, Heather, is she going to be collateral damage? Because, not because she's a bad person or she's done anything wrong. I think there's consensus based on what Erica said, talking to folks in the community. She's well-respected. But because of what Pastor Anderson has told us about how nefarious this process was?
Yeah, we have to separate the person from the process. And as, you know, as a person who is supposed to be served by the process as a citizen, as a voter, I'm concerned about being viewed as a mere puppet on a string and not having to get my own voice. And I thought that's what democracy was all about. And so, yeah, that is, that's the tough thing. Because everything I hear about her, she's, you know, well-respected in life. But, you know, the process is more important than the person when it comes to the integrity of democracy.
And you, Pastor Anderson, you live in the 10th, your church is in the 10th. What would you like to see happen with that seat? Assuming Mark Ridley Thomas, you know, first of all, the seat still belongs to him. The people of the 10th elected him. So depending on what happens with the council vote, in theory, the council could vote him back. There's nothing in the charter that absolutely positively makes him unavailable to serve. It's within the discretion of the council. Something could happen with respect to his federal lawsuit, the case against him, his indictment, where he could end up back in the seat, and maybe not. But like, living there, what do you want to see happen?
Yeah, let me first say that Heather Hutt is a wonderful person. Her family was married, had been married at my church, right? And so there is a relationship there. I think she's a wonderful person. But as Professor Armah said, that there's a moral obligation for the city and for democracy that transparency is upheld. And so the question I have is more around the process. I was one of those pastors who was a part of the group. And my church has been there for 90 years, and so it's a historic church. I was one of those pastors who asked Nuri Martinez, you know, "When can we have a town hall? We'll put it together." We volunteered our churches for us to have town hall meetings denied. I was with citizens who said, "Well, can we put forward other names or figure out what's going on? When can we have a conversation about it?" Denied. And the question was, "Why, why, what's the fear of hearing from the people for someone who's going to represent us and be the voice for over 200,000 residents?" And so I would love to see the process reviewed because clearly, it was not transparent. Clearly, we did not talk to the residents of the 10th District. Clearly, we don't know what the agenda was, which is, for me, as a 10th District person, I want to know, how do we feel about homelessness? How do we feel about street services? How do we feel about building affordable housing in our neighborhoods? How are we going to fund youth programs in our neighborhood? No one knows. We knew that when we wrote it for Mark Ridley Thomas. We do not know that by any appointees because there wasn't an opportunity to hear those questions. It was, "Oh, you need to hear this." And then, you know, I love Heather, but when she was appointed, the main person that was there was Ron Herrera, right? Who was over the Fed. And Ron, I knew Ron too, and I was heartbroken when he did that because he would call me brother. He was like, "Brother Anderson, whatever you need, I got you," you know? He would introduce me to his granddaughters or people of color. And I was like, "Well, if he's the main, your main character witness, then we have to re, we look at the process to figure out are the people of the 10th District actually having their voices heard? Was the process fair? Was it equitable? Because we know it wasn't transparent."
Wow, you said a lot there, Pastor Anderson. Really good point. And that's been a point I've been hammering, Erica. When I was calling for this investigation, I'm very concerned about the anti-blackness policies, allocation of resources as it relates to homelessness. You look at the streets of Los Angeles, 35, 40% of the people on those streets are black. And I've been hearing for a year or more that Nuri Martinez and others had an anti-blackness frame that they used to assess how the city would allocate its resources towards homelessness. That in fact, in one outburst, and I think we need to go find this videotape, Nuri Martinez shouts out, "What about the people in the park? Or the people that want to go to the park? The hard-working immigrants." And so she saw it as a zero-sum game. Either we support the hard-working immigrants, i.e. the non-black folks, or we support the black people on the street, which by, you know, definition, in her estimate, were unworthy, undeserving, and that's why they were on the streets. Was any of that sentiment known or discussed? Do you think, Erica, at the paper, any of your colleagues have any sense of this? Because I'm a little, I guess, perplexed that so many people are, oh, my God, so shocked about Nuri Martinez. Because I've been talking to some insiders in City Hall, and they're like, "I ain't all that surprised."
You know, that's a hard, I mean, I'm trying to think of the best way to answer this. I mean, I think that we have a lot of people that cover City Hall. I think homelessness, again, is a, you know, complicated citywide issue. And, you know, unfortunately, we have, or fortunately, or whatever it is, we have a number of readers who are like, yes. And it are not just, you know, Latino or white. They're like, you know, "Clear the streets, get rid of the encampments." And they have other people who are saying not. And of course, all of these things intersect with race. And I think that, obviously, Nuri Martinez, kind of, we saw where her politics were. I think part of the problem with that is, I'm not saying the problem, but I think from the optics standpoint of how we cover stuff, is that if you look at polling, her view is probably more in line with what most Angelenos at this point want out of the homelessness crisis, which I personally find troubling for all of the reasons you just stated. But, you know, the reality is, and you see.
Well, when you say most people, the city of Los Angeles, from my understanding, she wanted to criminalize the process. Is that what most Angelenos want?
If you look at some of the latest polling, and if you, I guess it depends on what you call criminalized. But if you call clearing encampments, sweeping encampments, whatever, not just issuing tickets, but basically getting rid of encampments, however you want to term it. If you look at some of the latest polling, most people will say, "Yes, we want these encampments gone." And that's kind of the, and I think you hear some of that reflected in the rhetoric in the mayor's race, for example, where neither Karen Bass nor Rick Caruso have said, "Yes, we're going to like, take a kind of a soft-pellet approach." It's always more of the over, you know, being more proactive, I guess, as you say, but to criminalize homelessness. And so I think that there is, I think as a paper that tries to, you know, serve the broader community, I think it has presented a problem. I mean, my own personal politics in this, and as a columnist, I'm able to do that. I don't agree with criminalizing homelessness, I don't agree with criminalizing homelessness, but I'm also well aware how many increasingly number of people want to do that, particularly since, you know, the emergency order was lifted after the, the pandemic. And I think that always, that complicates things with Nuri Martinez, right? Because when you have a huge number of people in the city who agree with her, even if it's anti-black, basically criminalizing poverty, I mean, what do you really do with that? I mean, I think that's the hard part. And I think that adds to the questions of, of all of this about what we really want to support. But yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think at the times we're all well aware of Nuri Martinez. I think some people were probably more skeptical of her than others, I would say is fair to say. But I don't know if that actually answers your question, but I think.
No, it does. But I, I think it's important that we make it clear. The rea, and, and part of the reason I would suspect that people have this, what I'll call harsh approach to homelessness is because it's the way homelessness has been handled. Because had we not had an anti-black frame, we would see more progress around homelessness. And I think there wouldn't be this level of frustration and this level of impatience that we see now. So we can't separate how the city has handled homelessness and the racial component of that from where we are now. So now there's this complete intolerance. Which we didn't have to get to this point because we have resources, we have the ability of the city and the county to work together, but they have been unable to, and a lot of it we know now is because of the racial animus. I, I do want to talk bigger picture, Professor Armah. At the heart of what we heard on that tape, despite, you know, beyond what I'll call just the racist comments, the personalized comments about Mike Bond, Bond and son, and, you know, I'm with the blacks, or he's with the blacks, or the blacks, the blacks, the blacks. Thank God they made it into a t-shirt so we can all be with the blacks. But on a bigger picture issue is, what's this say about the evisceration of black political power across this country? Because we are not to believe that this is just Los Angeles, right? This can't just be limited to that one audio tape and those three city council members in our city.
Yeah, and I wanna, you, I wanna, you hit the nail so squarely, Ariva. I wanna, uh, just kind of go back to that for a second. You know, to understand houselessness in LA, you have to walk through Skid Row and see that 75% of those faces are black in Skid Row itself. You know, I had a colleague who had to put some receipts to that effect in a recent article. And that reality should remind us of what happened after Hurricane Katrina and the ninth war. When you have those black folks standing on those rooftops with the water up to their neck. Day one goes by, two goes by, three goes by. Four days in, they still can't relieve those black folks from distress with water up to their neck. Sean Penn is rolling up and handing out water because FEMA still couldn't get his act together. And you compare that response to the response to after nine 11, when those planes ran into those buildings. There was a panic of empathy for those victims and we just got it done. There was no, oh, we gotta get through the red tape and all that. So when you do put a black face on a social, you know, an issue in which people are in social distress or any other kind of serious distress, there is a lack of care and concern on a collective level. In my most recent book, I talk about the cognitive unconscious and how that's happening at the level of the mirror neuron. But it's happening, this, this indifference. And when it's in policymakers, when we see it coming out of people like Nuri Martinez and the rest, when they, when these policymakers have these, this anti-black bias, then it translates into anti-black policy or policy that may not be quoted race, you know, explicitly, but is race. You know, like, we're, we're approaching houselessness because the problem is these, these people's internal deficiencies, not the lack of affordable housing. It's their lack of personal responsibility, not the lack of adequate job or an adequate social safety net. So we, we switch from macro level social factors to internal deficiencies because we're able to racialize it in a certain way and have people like Martinez and others call, call our two-year-old babies, you know, little monkeys as a way of otherizing, you know, and not having those sinews of sympathy reaching out to those communities. And you may, and I'll say finally, you see it most clearly with the, with the blacks comment that you put. You know, they were talking about Gaston and they were saying he was with the blacks. What do they mean by that? He's not black. He, you know, what, he, he, he just pursuing a policy, policies that are less penal and resisting racialized mass incarceration, a new conception of justice rooted in rehabilitation rather than in retribution and retaliation. And that makes him with the blacks, right? It makes it clear that we look at policy through a racial lens.
Yeah, no, no, that's so offensive. And, and Gaston, our, uh, progressive district attorney, who was the subject of failed recall attempts, uh, wrote a brilliant op ed, basically, you know, claiming that I'm with the blacks. So, uh, he embraced that and we saw folks showing up at city council, uh, with t-shirts on saying that. Erica, what, what's next on the paper in terms of following this? We know there's gonna be this contentious fight over who's going to be the next city council president. Uh, we know that national civil rights leaders, Al Sharpton, Reverend Jesse Jackson, the president of Southern, uh, Christian Leadership Conference, they've all weighed in on this issue as it relates to the 10th district, as it relates to the evisceration of black political power. So this local Los Angeles city council story has become a national story. It's been covered in the New York Times, it's been covered in the national media. Uh, how does the Times keep this story front and center? Because there's, there's some sense that these two council members, Gil Sadio, Kevin DeLeon, are, are kind of hoping that the story blows over and they wait it out. Uh, because they have been resistant to resigning, even though the president of the United States, the US Senator Alex Padilla, the mayor of Los Angeles, the Congressional Latino Caucus, powerful political, uh, figures like Fabian Nunez. I mean, we can go down the list of people that have asked these two men to resign and yet they've not submitted their resignations. The city council has no power to fire them, they can strip them of committees, but they can show up to work and continue to get that 200,000 plus salary a year. Uh, we know Sadio is gonna term out in, in December. But how does the paper play a part in making sure this story doesn't just disappear?
Well, I mean, I think we keep doing our jobs and writing stories. I mean, I think as you mentioned, the next fight is gonna be over, um, who's gonna be president. Um, I, yesterday, uh, both Sadio and DeLeon were stripped of their committee appointments, you know, pressure from other members of the city council to step down. We don't have a, you know, a mechanism for other members of the council to remove DeLeon and Sadio. So it's kind of unfortunately up to them to, to be out. But I think it's about, um, as opinion writers, I think, uh, we will continue to raise this issue and the fact that the need for them to resign will keep writing new stories. I think the next, um, obviously the, the investigations into redistricting from the state attorney general's office, there's also obviously the local conversation about redistricting and what that means. And I think there's also, you know, we're in the middle of an election. We have ballots, you know, on our coffee tables or in our mailboxes now. And we can talk about, you know, this recording and how, you know, anti-blackness plays into public policy, you know, that whoever the next mayor is going to be, have to deal with. And how do we navigate issues like houselessness and how those intersections of how public policy and anti-blackness have, you know, coalesced to create the conditions we see on the streets? And what the next mayor, what the next public officials are gonna do about that? I think it's having all of these conversations, it's keeping them top of mind. It's also, you know, talking to, you know, the Latino community, we have, you know, my, my fellow columnists, particularly Gustavo, has written quite a bit and I'm sure will continue to write, write quite a bit about this issue, um, you know, from that perspective. And I think it's just covering all aspects of the story as they arise and trying to, um, keep ahead of what's being said.
Erica, did the, the Times do a story on the debates? Because the tape was leaked last Sunday. We had a debate, I think it was Monday or Tuesday night. And at the end of the debate, one of the reporters, moderator said, LA has a choice between African-American woman and a white man. And the white man, Rick Caruso, said, I'm Italian, I'm Latin. I thought that needed like five front page stories. What did the Times do with that? I know there was so much going on that wasn't rumored.
We did a story. I can tell you that nobody, very few people read it. I can tell you from looking at the numbers, oh yes, we did do a story and yes, that, that comment was in there, absolutely.
Okay. Any efforts for anybody to investigate how many times, other than that one night, that Mr. Caruso identified as a, a Latin man? Anytime he checked the box on an application, anytime he showed up some way and put that white male privilege aside and said, I'm Latin, I'm just curious, I'm just asking, you know.
No, it's, it's a fair question and I don't think that we've been investigating that. I think given all the other various, very in our face racist things going on. But, I mean, it's a question worth asking. And actually I am, uh, scheduled to meet with Mr. Caruso tomorrow, so I will ask him that question.
Please, tell him that, you know, a, a friend wants to know. We just want to know how many times he shows up, uh, in, you know, in, uh, shows up as a Latin man. Because I, I did a little informal poll and I have a bunch of Latin men that work for me and none of them, uh, have ever heard him say that. None of them identify with him as their Latin brother. So, uh, I, we just want to know. We're gonna be checking for your call because we, we, we really want the answer to that. Pastor Anderson, before I let you go, this election, and Erica talked about it, there's been some opining by experts that this revelation, this October surprise cuts in favor of Bass. Some say it cuts in favor of, of Caruso. What's your sense in the sense of your members?
Yeah, man, I think, uh, coming from the 10th district, I think, I just want to draw a connection here that the last time LA had a black mayor was Tom Bradley. He came from the 10th district and he built a coalition of black, brown, Jewish minorities to, to get him elected. I think in this moment, what the city's gonna look for is can we find another person, another mayor, who can mend this coalition that this tape says doesn't exist, right? And so I think that for us in our congregation, I mean, we're, we're historically black congregation. So we want to see a black woman, uh, become mayor of the city. And we want to see it because we know that if a black woman becomes mayor of the city, she has to do it through a coalition, right? That just by the numbers, that she has to do it through a coalition. And so that's what we hope, uh, to see. I, I think that, that, that is a fallout of this tape, right? That people are gonna be looking for, who could actually bring this city together from the ground up and not from the top down and start remending these coalitions and highlighting these coalitions' work in our city. So we can have a city where all Angelinos can fly and none are like, oh, those blacks can rest in Skid Row.
And Professor, Professor Armour, last question for you. Uh, I, I think what this tape showed us is that we are somewhat naive when we talk about people of color and we lump all people of color together and we refuse to have hard conversations about the, uh, divisions that exist between, uh, people of color and the whole issue of colorism, both amongst African-Americans and obviously amongst, uh, folks who identify as Latin Americans. How do we get to healing? Everybody wants to talk about healing, but I'm not sure we've spent enough time talking about the root of that problem yet. So where do you think we go and, and what should we be doing in this moment?
Yeah, we carry on the discussion we started a couple summers ago when the streets of LA were roiling with protesters for six weeks in a row, every day. And we were trying to confront our systemic anti-blackness, our structural anti-blackness. And this is the definition of that. This isn't just Martinez and DeLeon and Sadio and, and Sadio and, and, you know, Herrera in a room. They, they had a comfort in saying what they said that made it clear that they were in a lot of other rooms saying that sort of thing. That these, these attitudes are common, they're woven into the culture and we gotta confront them, you know, critical, through critical self-reflection and serious self-revision. You're right, not look at the people of color, you know, kind of label as something that is, is always that helpful, meaningful. What it can obscure is the fact that within that category is a racial hierarchy. And at the bottom of that racial hierarchy, within that category are black faces again. Black face is the bottom of wealth. And the way that a lot of groups like Irish and now perhaps Latino, Latinx folks achieve whiteness in America is through anti-blackness, you know, through making attacks on black folk. You know, my, uh, my, my, my mom is a Irish immigrant herself. And I, I can tell you the history of Irish folks, they didn't come to this country white. They achieved whiteness through anti-blackness. And a lot of groups recognize that and that's kind of what you saw going on there. They're, we need to confront that as a city and I think we can. I'm hopeful when, from some of the voices and how we're coming up, but we gotta be serious. It can't be a kumbaya moment where we just brush it out and say, this isn't us. We need to say, no, this is us, but how are we gonna be better? This was us, this is us, but there, there's also other us's here. And we can go and speak to the higher angels of our nature, the better us's, or we can let ourselves descend into the worse us.
No, excellent, excellent point. We've got to deal with this notion that people achieve proximity to whiteness, i.e., uh, higher rung on the racial hierarchy by ascribing to this, uh, anti-blackness that we heard on that audio tape. And you're right, Irish have done it, the Italians have done it. So, uh, let, let's hope that this is not the history that Latin folks in LA take. We know there are too many examples of folks working together in coalitions from community coalition, which Karen Bass built, an organization that, uh, when she left, Marquise Harris Dawson led, and now is led by Latinos, the organization. I've built special needs network, I'm a black woman at the top. The folks that are right under me are, are Latinx people. We have a multi-racial group of high-level executives in my organization. So we know that people can work together. Uh, we know that coalitions can be built, but we cannot do it if we are unwilling to face the hard facts that we heard on that audio, which there is still very persistent in this town, uh, an anti-blackness sentiment that has to be rooted out. Thanks to all of you, uh, we're gonna get there, I'm hopeful. Again, thanks so much for sitting down with me and this conversation will continue, so watch this space. My next guest is Cristo Nix Heinz. She is a partner at the Los Angeles Law Firm of Quinn Emanuel. She's also a former ambassador to UNESCO in Paris, appointed by President Barack Obama. She is representing Mercury Thomas in his civil lawsuit where he is seeking to be compensated for his back pay as well as going forward. Good morning and welcome, Cristo.
It's great to be here with you today, Ariva.
So Cristo, let's get started about this lawsuit. We know that Mercury Thomas has a couple of things going on from a legal standpoint. He obviously, uh, has to deal with these federal, uh, criminal charges that are pending against him. And I, I think I read someplace that the trial for that has been moved to March of next year. But there is this pending lawsuit, a, a civil lawsuit that's seeking money damages where you're representing him. Tell us the basis of that lawsuit.
The basis of that lawsuit, Ariva, is that the controller, Ron Galperin, had absolutely no authority to terminate his salary and benefits. Uh, if you look at the city charter, uh, section 218, um, he has the authority to give pay to city officials. There's no authority to revoke pay. And if you look at other sections of the charter pertaining to his duties, in fact, there are 11 enumerated duties that he has, none of which involve termination of pay. So our position is that he acted outside of his authority, um, and we're seeking, um, that that decision be overturned.
So has the city of Los Angeles filed a formal response to the complaint that your firm filed?
They have not yet. In fact, Ariva, we've done everything we can to try and reach an amicable settlement with the city. We initially, back in February, sent Controller Galperin a demand letter, asking him to reconsider his decision. Then we filed our complaint and we withheld serving it in the hopes that we could, uh, reach an agreement with the city for them to restore their pay and benefits. And so far they have not, uh, responded to that. And our position is, uh, we also represented the Southern Christian, uh, Law Center in Southern California, the SCLC, in their suit, um, regarding the city council's decision to appoint a term doubt. Uh, Congressman Herb Wesson, uh, to fill Congressman Mercury Thomas's seat. We said that was unlawful. Um, we succeeded in having it enjoined, uh, by two separate judges. And again, our position is, you know, reverse from this indefensible position. You will not win this and they could not. And we're saying the same thing here. Let's not waste taxpayer resources, you know, tie everybody up in court for a decision that is clearly unlawful.
So, so everyone, I, I want everyone to be clear. Mercury Thomas, even though he has been suspended, he is still a member of the city council. And for folks who aren't in Los Angeles, we should note, Mercury Thomas is, uh, considered one, one of the most powerful African-American, and I would venture to say just elected officials in the state of California. He served both, uh, previously on the city council, then went to the state legislature as an assembly member and then a state senator, then came back and served 12 years on the very powerful Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. And now is at his, uh, second tour of duty, as you will, on the Los Angeles City Council. He was in that office for over a year and a half or so, elected by the members or the residents of the Los Angeles, uh, City Council District 10, and then suspended by the city council once he was indicted. Just to give everyone kind of a history of, of who Mercury Thomas is. Uh, and he still, again, is an elected member of that body, the LA City Council, even though he is suspended. Does Ron Galperin, our controller, the controller for the city of Los Angeles, does he have any precedent that he's following in terms of where he perhaps has cut off the salary and benefits of other city council members who had been suspended by the council, uh, members as a body?
Well, you know, the city will point to the situation of Mr. Weezer, whose, whose salary, um, was also revoked. Now, he did not challenge that. And also it's important to point out, I mean, and thank you for pointing out, Congressman Ridley Thomas is dedicated over 30-year career in public service. But it's important to point out that the federal indictment charges have nothing to do with his duties on the city council. That predated that, it would have to do with a, a different jurisdiction as well. And so, you know, our position. And so, you know, our position, and the authority to suspend him in the first instance was discretionary. And also, you know, you mentioned the fact that he's still a city councilman. He actually received a letter to that effect, and under the ethics rules of the city council, he is not able to seek any other employment. So he's had his salary and benefits cut off now for months, and he is not able to do any other, any other jobs that would provide remuneration at a time when he is seeking to fend himself in his criminal indictment, and obviously needs resources to do that. So it's a very untenable situation.
Well, let's talk about the salary, because many people think of city council members maybe in smaller cities where they work part-time, they all have other jobs, many, you know, work as lawyers or doctors or work in other professions, but in the city of Los Angeles, a city council member, it's a full-time position, and they make over $200,000 in salary a month, plus all kinds of other great government benefits. So this lawsuit, if we were to add up the back pay that Mark hasn't received for over a year, give us the order of magnitude of the money at stake here.
No, it will be significant, along with interest. I mean, we haven't computed it to the penny, but you're right, it will be substantial. And it was over $200,000, I think close to $225,000 that he was receiving, and has been summarily revoked. And when you think about, you know, how all of us would survive if suddenly our salaries were suddenly cut off, you know, with very little notice, summarily, and obviously led by President Nury Martinez. I should also note that, you know, two council members have put motions before the council, asking the city attorney to look into whether, you know, Congressman, Controller Galperin had the authority to do what he did. And President Martinez has refused to bring those motions to the floor. And we're hoping now that there's a change in leadership, that they will take a new tact.
And let me correct myself, I think I said he was making $200,000 a month, that would be over $2 million. I just made a major raise.
That would be a very popular job.
Yes, I know, I'd want that job if he was on the same line. So let me correct myself, it's about $200,000 plus a year, and he's been off his salary, he hasn't been receiving his salary for over a year, and you say plus interest. So maybe we're talking about $300,000 in that range. And then obviously going forward, that's about $18,000, $19,000 a month in salary that he's missing. Let me ask you this, Cristo, so now, a week ago, a little over a week ago, we get this disturbing, what some are calling October surprise, this leaked audio tape of these three disgraced city council members, plus a former labor leader, engaging in this racist rant, this orchestrated plan to eviscerate black political power in the city of Los Angeles. And at the first, I listened to that entire hour, 15 or so, audio tape, and the first 15 to 20 minutes ago or so of that tape, they are railing against Margaret Lee Thomas, what he hasn't done, and how he takes credit for being the housing guru of the city, and how he likes to grandstand. So obviously not very favored by these three members. And then there's also conversation about, let the white guy, referring obviously to Ron Galperin, who happens to be our city controller and who happens to be white, let him take the fall for kind of doing Margaret Lee Thomas in. How significant will these leaked, or this leaked audio and the comments by these city council members, now former council member Nury Martinez, former president of the city council, Nury Martinez, how significant will what's on that tape be to you succeeding in your lawsuit?
Well, I don't think it will have direct bearing on the legal issues in the case, but certainly those tapes were absolutely appalling, and, you know, it's been gratifying to see the city come together and demand that she step down and resign from not only the presidency of the council, but from her position. And, you know, Congressman Ridley Thomas certainly believes that the other two, Congressman Sadio and Congressman DeLeon, should also resign, just having their committees stripped from them is not enough. But I think that it demonstrates what we have been saying all along, which is that they have treated Congressman Ridley Thomas really terribly throughout this, you know, they, we still have a presumption of innocence in this country, and they summarily acted, you know, within, you know, a very short time after the indictment. Nury Martinez, as I said, refused to even have the council consider whether Congressman Controller Galperin had the authority to do what he did. And, you know, and they have rebuffed all of our attempts to reach out and try and resolve this amicably, so. And, you know, that politics of racial division is something that we, as Los Angelenos, all have to stand up against, and I'm very happy that, you know, members of the Latino community, you know, the white community, obviously the African-American community, said that that's not who we are, and that's not the kind of leadership that we want in the city. And we're hoping that that will also reflect in how they move forward with him going forward. He did offer to step back from his duties, and, you know, and got no response to that. And, you know, it's been that continual dismissiveness, I think, throughout all of this, including to his district, where, you know, President Nury Martinez, you know, railroaded in Mr. Herb Wesson, and then insisted on Heather Hutt, without really asking the community and providing an opportunity for the community to provide meaningful input into who should be Congressman Ridley Thomas's temporary replacement.
So we know that Karen Price, who currently is the council member for the 9th district, he was on the show last week, he's vying to be the new president of the city council. And on my show, he said that in his position as president, assuming he wins, that he would bring forth that motion to have a determination made about the legality of what Ron Galperin did as it relates to denying Margaret Lee Thomas his salary. Does the council itself, under your understanding of the law and the charter, have the ability to not just direct the city attorney to give a legal opinion, but to actually bring forth the motion and to vote on its own that Margaret Lee Thomas's salary and benefits should be restored? Is that something that they have the power to do under the charter?
We believe it is something they could, because they could have spoken as to his salary and benefits when they passed the initial motion to suspend him. And so we're hoping that, you know, that not only would they, particularly, you know, if they get some candid advice from the city attorney, which we believe they should, saying that, you know, this lawsuit is not going to be successful, that they should reverse course, and they should either restore his benefits themselves or instruct the controller to do so.
So Cristo, there are some members of the community that are in favor or have been outspoken about Mr. Ridley Thomas or council member Ridley Thomas receiving his back pay and his salary going forward. Others have even gone further and says that he should be reinstated, that he should not have been suspended in the first place. Again, although I know you said the recording is not likely to have a bearing on the legal case, but I can't help but wonder, given the anti-blackness sentiment that was so pervasive in those, you know, in that audio tape, is there a case to be made that even the suspension itself was done as a result of Nury Martinez and others' anti-blackness, and that Margaret Lee Thomas should be reinstated?
Well, we made that argument as part of the SCLC case, arguing that, you know, the predicate for appointing Herb Wesson was flawed because he shouldn't have been suspended in the first place. Dead Struggle, you know, did not embrace those legal arguments, but I think, you know, as a political matter, it is an opportunity for the council to, you know, now that they know and have heard, and we've all heard, you know, that the driving force for all the actions regarding council member Ridley Thomas have come from Nury Martinez, and we've, you know, she showed her colors and her character and her motivations, that that's something that, you know, the new leadership could and should take up.
Finally, Cristo, what's next? This lawsuit's pending, you said there's been no formal response from the city of Los Angeles, efforts to settle the case and to reach some kind of amicable resolution, you say have fallen on deaf ear. So where does your team go next?
Well, to the court of law, where we fully expect that we will be successful. We understand that the city is planning to file a demur, which is, you know, the equivalent of seeking to dismiss our action. We believe that will fail, and that we will move forward in litigating the case. And, you know, since I have the floor, I would like to say that we think that is misguided, and that there is an opportunity to take the high road and the correct road in restoring his salary and benefits, but if not, that we will do what we do and litigate this case all the way through the end until we are victorious.
Thank you so much, Cristo, for keeping us informed. Obviously, this is just one of many of the fallouts from this leaked audio tape, the manipulation by President, former President Martinez, to quash those motions that were made by two council members to have this matter studied by the Los Angeles city attorney. Hopefully, they will come forward and we will get a legal opinion. Our city deserves that, and as you said before, the city invests thousands, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in defending this lawsuit. We need to hear from our city attorney about what the charter provides as it relates to the power of our city controller. And going forward, we need more clarity on how matters like this should be handled at the city level. It shouldn't be a guessing game, it shouldn't matter who's sitting in that president's seat. I think that's one of the most appalling things that we are learning about how our laws are manipulated based on people's own personal, in this case, racial animus. Again, thank you so much, Cristo, for sitting down with me this morning.
Thank you so much, Ariva, for the very, all the support.
I want to thank all of my guests this morning, Erica Smith. Make sure you follow her column in the Los Angeles Times, really thoughtful columns by Erica. She took a lot of flak for the column that she wrote about Heather Hutt, but as she said, that's just one of many columns. You heard Pastor Anderson say, Heather and his family have been members of his church for many years. She is a well-respected professional throughout the city of Los Angeles, but she finds herself somewhat in the crossroads. She was appointed to the Los Angeles City Council District 10 by a process that we now know stinks, that's rotten to the core. So the question is, what's going to happen, not only to District 10 and to the seat that Heather Hutt is now occupying, but what's going to happen to those maps? Those maps that Pastor Anderson told us were thrown out by Nury Martinez and crew? Those maps that reflected the will of those 19 commissioners that were appointed and who were given the task of drawing those maps? Is the city attorney, Mike Fuhr, is his recommendation that those maps be completely redrawn? Will that be followed by the city attorney? Will the attorney general step in and demand that they be redrawn? Does he have the power to do so? And then Margaret Lee Thomas, he's facing some pretty serious lawsuits, a civil lawsuit where he's trying to get back his back pay from over a year ago, he's trying to get his salary going forward. His attorney, Cristo, Nix Heinz, says he has a very good case in that the city would do itself justice by settling the lawsuit and saving the city millions of dollars in legal expenses. Cristo and crew beat the city in the lawsuit that was filed on behalf of residents of the 10th, who said that former city council member Herb Wesson had termed out of office and by charter provisions wasn't able to serve even as a temporary city council member. Cristo's law firm filed that lawsuit, and they won. So I don't know, my money's on Cristo, she seems to be pretty sharp, not to mention that she is my Harvard Law School alumni, so I'm going to follow that lawsuit, as we all should be following that lawsuit, and following everything that's happening in the city of Los Angeles, because even though these are local issues, they have huge, huge national ramifications. That's why the President of the United States, Joe Biden, he weighed in on this racist rant that was heard on audio tape, and he himself called for all three of those city council members to step down. So if you think this is just a local issue, you got it twisted. This is an issue that has huge implications for the city of Los Angeles, for who's going to be our next mayor, and for national democratic politics. So my words to live by, follow this space, follow this space, because we are going to bring you the latest information, updates, and expert opinions, as well as the voices of people on the streets in Los Angeles, because we want to make sure you have all the information, because we know, at the special report, that knowledge is power. Be safe out there, and remember, we're all in this together.